revenues have grown about five and a half percent per year over the five-year period. The second slide here, we have the same general fund. This is your expenditures and debt service. You can see in blue there, your total operating expenditures have grown at about 4.3% per year over that same five-year period. So it's good that your revenues are outpacing your expenditures. You can also see there that your public safety expenditures are about $10.3 million, or roughly a third of your operating expenditures are going to public safety. You will see a significant increase in your debt service this year. That relates to the new park bond you all have. But across the bottom, that's really the important number for me, is your unassigned fund balance, or what you all have to use this year and going forward. And you can see you had about $26.8 million there available to you at June 30th, which has grown at just under 2% per year over that time period. So it's good to see you all are doing things for the town with parks and other new items and vehicles and things, and still growing that fund balance a little bit of level there. So you can see a pie chart that shows where the revenues are coming from, another one where they're going. You can see there, their $10.3 million public safety, 6.1 a public And then I mentioned the new standard for subscription IT arrangements. It does appear that GAZB is slowing down a little bit, which is a nice relief for us a little bit. The next couple of standards that are coming out, standard 99 and 100, will be just a change of verbiage in report. You probably won't even notice those. Statement 101 for compensated abstinence will change the calculation for sick leave. So that'll be a little bit of a change for accountants. But in 2025, you may see a small adjustment to your liability for compensated abstinence, but not anything too significant. So overall, this year, we've worked with your immune system in detail. I know the staff has worked extremely hard getting that implementation done. There were some challenges working through that, but the staff has figured most of them out working through it. They've worked really hard on that implementation. It did allow us to have a login to view only. That helped us review things remotely as well. So while it has been challenging, it was good for us to have that, and hopefully continues to improve. I know the staff is working hard on that. So the audit process went really, really well, and you're in great financial shape. Are there any questions?
Can you talk about the grants and stuff that they're involved in? I guess including that, was everything included with this?
You still have something you had not spent, I'm pretty sure is what you...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. So those are recognized as revenue as you spend them?
Revenue?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Good question. Thanks very much.
Thank you all. Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it. Now, Finance Director Val tweeted, "Present Budget Amendment Number Two for 2023, 2024."
This is really short. Right after we finished our last budget amendment, bids came in on the industrial park stormwater improvement project. And the bids, of course, came in much higher than we anticipated or hoped. And that is going to leave them short of the project, and they can't accept the bids until funds are appropriately appropriated. So the budget request is to increase that budget by 309,000, and that would come from the stormwater fund balance that they have available. And that's it.
Can I ask you again, because we have, I believe, and I remember, it was $300,000 we have all become, you will hope, in the project, right? Wasn't it? Is there something else?
That's different, yeah. Yeah. It's a stormwater improvement project out there.
Oh.
Yeah.
So does that nothing to do with the project of the whole thing? And what was the estimated before? I'm sorry, what was the amount that you had of the budget for this before?
There's $750,000 in the budget right now, and this will increase it by 309. Little over a million-dollar project.
Can I get someone to say who's coming from Stormwater?
Stormwater Enterprise Fund.
So where is that going to be funded? College Street Stormwater Project?
College Street is being funded primarily from grants and from the ARPA funds, the drainage project. Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we'll have the floor for some comments. And as always, you have three minutes. You address your comments to the chair, give your name and address, and again, you have three minutes. Who would like to address council?
Hi, I'm Jeff Akers. I live at 345 Howery Street in Christiansburg. I'd like to start by saying congratulations to Kim Bowman and Johanna Hicks for a job well done. I'm gonna start my little clock here so I don't get shut down. Everyone in this town should be very concerned when the mayor comes to a polling site and accuses me of stealing windy glasses campaign signs in front of business polling, the busiest polling site in the town. I also want to talk about the sign I used for my campaign. Randy Wingfield used the town cameras to track my location and then call the chief of police and have him call an officer to come out and tell me the police turned my sign off, that this was, I wasn't breaking a law, I was breaking an ordinance. So we're using our, our, our funds for ordinance violations, not breaking the law. But the town can use the same sign for events as they deem worthy. It's a rules-for-thee and not-for-me situation, two-tier justice system. This town needs to know what kind of two-tier leadership we have with Randy and Mike. Disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Chris, I got one in front of you there, buddy.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mayor, council, I'm Joanne Price, Blacksburg, Virginia, but I have a business in Christiansburg, in the town of Christiansburg. I'm here tonight because I have a concern. I understand that there is an amendment, a budget amendment, and there are some funds that are going to be voted on to be given to the museum. Two concerns that I have is, number one, I was told that the museum is housing some town documents, historical documents, and that's fine. But the clerk's office, by law, also holds historical documents. So why do we have them in two different places, number one? The other one is, is that it is, by law, the clerk's responsibility for care of those historical documents. But the main point is, is that the director of the museum is a sitting town council member. So how is this not an appearance of a conflict of interest? So I also understand that Mr. Jenkins, who is the director of the museum, receives a salary in his role as director. So are town taxpayers assisting in paying the salary for a nonprofit employee? I think these are some concerns, and it would be in the best interest of taxpayers to table this vote until these issues can be flushed out and more transparency provided to the taxpayers and voters.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Ruby Street. I'm also here to talk about the item on the agenda for the museum, the Montgomery Museum. This was decided in your budget, and unfortunately, it appears Ms. Hockett has decided to wait until Henry Showalter will not be here to vote, so she can hopefully get a tie, and the mayor break the tie. All the while ignoring, and to answer your question, Joanne, there is a conflict of interest, because, in fact, Casey Jenkins filled out the grant paperwork asking for money for the organization that pays him, he is the director of. And I know in the past, Ms. Hockett has said, "Well, that's personal. That's on Casey Jenkins." It's not the town council's responsibility to worry about whether he's breaking the law, and it is breaking the law. And apparently, you also like to ignore your own code of ethics that says that you all are to comply with both the letter and spirit of the laws, "And council members shall work for the common good of the people of Christiansburg and not for any private or personal interest." You've had Conflict to Interest Act training. Either you didn't pay attention, or you just want to ignore it. But, and you decided to sneak it through once you found out the Councilman Showalter would not be here, in hopes of a tie that the mayor could break. Thank you.
Mr. Showalter was aware this was going to be on the agenda, and he decided not. He knew before this meeting we were going to have this meeting, Chris.
And he knew after last meeting that he wasn't going to be here because he told everybody.
We talked to him. Never mind. I'm not bothering you. I'm not bothering you. Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name is Nora Bolte. I'm the director of Wonder Universe, a children's museum. I just wanted to say a few things about the museum and the community that we serve. Wonder Universe provides unique, hands-on learning opportunities designed especially for young children and their caregivers. Our interactive exhibits, programs, camps, and classes for various age groups help kids build essential learning skills that prepare them for academic and social success. With our commitment to the power of play, Wonder Universe provides families with a high-quality playful learning experience at a price well below our entertainment venues in the area. Our museum boosts tourism and the local economy to serve as a unique and family-friendly attraction that draws visitors to the area. We engage guests from beyond the NRV, with regularly bringing in guests from West Virginia and North Carolina. Our museum continues to be a trusted educational partner to our region's schools. Just last spring, 1,572 children were able to visit the museum for school field trips. We participate in a Museums for All program that allows children and their families who receives, excuse me, food assistance, like SNAP and WIC, to enjoy free or reduced daily admission. Year-to-date, we have had 27,160 visitors to Wonder Universe. Of those visitors, 23% have used our Museums for All to access, excuse me, to access free or reduced admission. Wonder Universe remains committed to cultural appreciation and to building strong networks, excuse me, strong networks of community partnerships. We have partnered with the Association of Children's Museums, as well as the Christiansburg Institute, and several professors from Virginia Tech, like Dr. May Hay during the Indigenous Culture Month last month. We are so grateful to partner with the town of Christiansburg. Your support means so much to us, and so we just want to say thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bob Beard. I live here in Christiansburg. Like we like with most of us, inflation is killing a lot of us. Inflation is just out of control, and we're raising our taxes, and we're going, the spending is just uncontrollable and really irresponsible. Our school board spent $95 million to renovate Christiansburg High School, and Salem did the same thing, went from $1,200 to $600 for $35 million. But yet, we're going to spend $95 million on Christiansburg High School. Okay, we got all this, all the spending. We have tax increases. You guys just raised our taxes. The utilities is going to raise, on average, households, we need additional $20 a month for your power bill starting in January. Appalachian Power just raised our power bills, 1.6 cents per 100,000, I forget the terminology, but it doesn't matter. We're still going to have increased our tower bills. So what I'm trying to say is, we have to be frugal. This is the time to be frugal and not to spend money. You know, we got kids, a record number of kids applying for financial aid for food and lunches at our public school system, and yet, we're spending more money. The money ought to be kept tight so we can help those in need, and not be spending money on pet projects that only help a few and not help the masses. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. I will close. This is comments. We'll be along to committee reports. Central Business Committee, Mr. Jenkins.
Yes, sir. So the facade grant committee met last week to discuss the applications they received. We received four applications and have three to be recommended for funding tonight at $5,000 in front of you. The first, Southview Development, which is across from Burger King, to be fully awarded at $5,000. Among their projects, their chief one is to create a ramp across the full front facade to make that more accessible to everyone. They've done a lot of work on the front and the back of the building over the years. Number two, 250 North Franklin Street, to be awarded $5,000 as well, the full amount. That is going to be turned into a vet clinic. It's Catty Corner to Pizza Inn, and they are looking to take what they've done at Town and Country on North Franklin and replicate some of the architectural features on that site there as well, to reimagine that building. Number three is the Depot down in Cambria, and that too to be awarded at $5,000 for things related to painting, windows, and doors, historical preservation for that building, specifically for front-facing doors and windows as well. So those three out of the four were recommended for full funding tonight. And that's the...
Yeah, that's good.
Go ahead.
And just to make a comment, we bought in, like, six, seven people to, you know, with this. I rechecked the record to make sure the land is actually now on the ready hook, which means that, you know, that we dispose of this, and we have requests of help for the landscape, you know, on the...
Uh-huh.
The, um, what I'm requesting right now is for the full amount, the $5,000 to be awarded, but no work in the landscape. And that, you know, there is an agreement by Norfolk Southern.
Right.
And I know that that was in the class, but I would really like to see if there was any landscape work to be done, to be, you know, to be going through Norfolk Southern, just to make sure, because Norfolk Southern is the one that actually owns the land, not the Cambria people.
So otherwise, yeah, otherwise, I think it's painting, windows, and doors, which will take the chunk of that anyway.
Or place, you know.
Probably the good thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Most poor town.
Especially for a historical building, so.
Took a couple of years ago, I know.
Yeah. So that's in the form of a motion.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to fund the three requests for the 2023 facade grant awards. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Let us file a...
And just a, I know that this is not part of the discussion, I want to really thank all the members of that committee for making it happen too, and so quickly.
All right, thank you. Street Committee, Ms. Hockett, Mr. Bishop.
All right, so the Street Committee has two items to share with council this evening. The first is the subdivision of this plat. And so this, right currently, is just one lot. This is the area that's across from the middle school you see here. As you know, council approved the development of townhomes here, and so they would like to subdivide this and create these 49 lots for those townhomes. The Street Committee reviewed, and no questions. We'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second. A motion and a second on the subdivision plat. Any comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Let us file a, your second request?
The second is the dedication of three easements on tax parcels, 528-872 and 528-865. All right, well, it's halfway here.
Any help there, Andrew? Square to what?
I, I'm...
Let me go ahead and...
Okay. All right, Andrew, fill in any gaps that I missed. But there are three easements that are shown here on the tax parcel. Two of them are existing, so you see here in the shaded areas. These are two existing easements, and they would like to move those easements and dedicate them to the town so that we can continue to access the utilities, but also work around the building that is here. And then a new easement that is dedicated here, and that will be for a water line. The Street Committee reviewed this and would also like to approve, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Second. Now, where is this property located, if I might ask?
This is, okay, Andrew?
Yes, so this is a Montgomery County garage building that is new. It is next to Kiwanis Park, behind the Montgomery County...
Thank you.
So it's recently been completed, and this is simplified, all what that has to be done, that it gets relocated, that a new utility...
Okay.
This is someone that is prepared from Montgomery County Water Supervisor, right?
Correct.
They own the property, but the easement is, we're granting them, or they're granting us?
So they are granting us, or, uh, for the ability to access.
So you said that this was completed?
Yes, yeah, the garage is completed.
And now, is this easement, do they have anything to do also with the stormwater or anything on that area that they are trying to give us an easement for? Or is it just for a power line and water line?
Right, so as Councilwoman Hockett had stated there, there are three easements that we then call out, the sewer easements, the front of the property here, then there's a water line easement. And then you'll see here, this was an existing easement that has been relocated over here so that it's, is out of the way of this building.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Let us file a, thank you. Discussion and action by mayor and council, consideration of community support, funding requests for Wonder Universe. Ms. Hockett, Mr. Bishop. Ms. Hockett?
Thank you. Okay, so as you all know, of course, we all know, we voted to support the community grants that were part of the original budget. And during that process, we had a lot of community support come out and discuss their support for both the Wonder Universe and the Montgomery Museum. And they came out in quite significant numbers, and so felt very strongly that this year, we needed to close the loop on that and revisit these items, and hear, or at least acknowledge, the support that these two things received. I did some research just to learn a little bit more about why these cultural nonprofit organizations are so important to our community. And a couple of things that I came up with that I just want to share with everyone is, is that they have a large economic impact, they're contributing to the local economy, and of course, these two museums are driving business to our uptown and our downtown areas, providing services that are not filled in other ways. Community development, they provide a really vital role in community development by fostering a sense of identity and pride and belonging within our community. They offer education and enrichment, so the experiences, they are built, education and enrichment, in our children and in our community, and then beyond for our visitors who come in. They foster social cohesion through connectedness, inclusivity, interaction, and community dialogue in both of these spaces. That's a really significant component. They foster health and well-being, and of course, tourism and promotion, their destinations that live within our community. And in my opinion, identifying areas for our community support is identifying ways that we can give to those organizations who are in our community, who are filling roles and needs that the government is simply not built to fulfill. And some of us attended the Chamber of Commerce banquet, and Sharon Scott had a really nice quote, that nonprofits are filling roles in our community that would otherwise be gaps that are not served. And I think that supporting them signals not only that we're a partner who believes in the work they do and the needs they meet, but also is responsive to the massive outpouring of support that they received from our community members, where community members don't typically come out in numbers like that for other items. And I know that these are small pieces of our budget, the small pieces of their budget, but I think it's also about supporting a community nonprofit that's filling a role that's really vital to a lot of components of our local government and our town. So that's why I asked, and I appreciate Sam supporting me. I, I would just like Town Council to consider, I realize that we could talk about this in the coming year, but our community came out, talked to us, and that's why I wanted to address it before the end of this calendar year. So I'd like to make a motion, first, that we approve the support funding request for Wonder Universe. Their original ask, I believe, was $5,000?
Ten.
$10,000? Or, well, but our limit was $5,000, right?
No.
It was ten?
Yeah.
And I'd like to make a motion, we approve, approve it at $10,000. Is it $10,000?
Just.
Okay. Well, I have to run them out. Thank you.
Do I have a second? One second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on Wonder Universe?
I think they should wait until the next council meeting, when Kim Bowman is part of the meeting. I really think that we all knew Showalter was not coming to this meeting. He was voted against at the beginning of the budget. This is, we're in the middle of a budget, and here we are talking about this today right before the new year. So I personally think, don't have anything against the museum. I think it's a wonderful place to go to. Our kids have gone there and everything else, and I think, you know, I think it's a personal decision for us to support it, not a town council decision to support it, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, last year, I voted not to support them, all right? But since that time, I have learned a lot about the universe, what they do. I've gone over a couple of times to visit, and my fault, I've been over when they were closed, so I didn't see much going on. But I have seen input, like most of us, from the citizens. So that may change my mind tonight.
Any other comments? And incidentally, to address your comment about we should discuss this in the next year, we will, because community grants come up again.
Well, we can wait until then.
In the next one, in the next round.
We can wait until for another three months, we'll be discussing.
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
And I'll say, my original thought was I would, I mean, was, okay, well, it didn't work out with this council, maybe we can ask the next council to reconsider. But our community didn't come to the next council, they came to us. And I wish that Henry was here to make a decision.
Wish he voted against them.
I'm sorry?
He voted against them.
I, I know. I wish he was here to have a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
No.
Let us, three, two, and that motion carries to fund $10,000 to Wonder Universe.
I would also like to make a motion for the same reasons to support funding the Montgomery Museum of Art and History.
Second. Motion and second, discussion?
I will say, this can also wait for the next year and for another month. It's just one month until Kim Bowman is seated. And I think, you know, people like her to make those decisions as well. And the reality is, I mean, we should really wait for the next, it's only one month, and we can wait.
We'll see who will be voting on the next year's budget. This is follow-up and clean this year's budget that we're operating on.
It's not a cleanup, it's a really fast, uh, vacuuming.
Would you call it, please?
Councilman Bishop.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Abstained.
Councilman Wilson.
Nay.
Let us, two and two, and as Mr. Walter So predicted, I will vote in favor of funding the museum for $10,000. Stanford reports, town manager. Staff reports, town manager?
Just like I said, point out, contrary to what was mentioned earlier, town ordinances aren't laws, and they do need to be followed.
I'm sorry, town manager speaking. Go ahead and repeat that.
Like I say, as, in regards to the previous statement, that town ordinances aren't laws, they are laws, and they can be, can be charged with violations of town code.
What were you saying? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Town ordinances are laws, or town code. Also, just in regards to use of highway construction trailers, the town does not use highway construction trailers for advertising our events, we use it to advertise the street closures for our events, and there's a difference. And I'll just, I guess, point out, in this, any, I guess, general comments towards our budgets refine, but just in regards to Montgomery County School Board construction, you may want to address those to Montgomery County School Board or Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, as they're responsible for the school projects.
And I believe Don has, I think I've seen him before at the school board also.
Okay, just, I'll ask, I guess, council's consideration of my going ahead and signing the Radford City Aquatic Center Use Agreement, we agreed to renew the agreement last year, we had had a five-year agreement prior to that, we signed another five-year agreement last year, and it has basically four-year, four-year renewals on it. Under that agreement, we are collecting seventy-two hundred dollars, and that's for two hundred users per month, and they would pay six dollars additional if they go over the two hundred users. Terry, I think, says that agreement's working well. If it's permissible with you, I'd like to go ahead and renew that agreement with them.
Randy, is that the seventy-two hundred, you know, for two hundred users? Is that six dollars a person?
After, after two hundred per month.
And what is it before?
It's the seventy-two hundred dollar payment, basically annual payment from them.
It's six dollars.
Is it still six dollars?
Six, if you go over the two hundred per month, yes, it's six dollars a person.
No, but what does the seventy-two hundred dollars equal?
Well, there's twelve hundred people, and that's, put, seventy-two, six, so it is six dollars a person.
Yes, it is.
From the contract, and six dollars per person, anything over the contract.
Okay.
I'll just mention that Santa's coming to town, is of course taking place this week for the eleventh, from the fifteenth, eleventh to the fifteenth, from six to nine, and our Light Up the Homes for the Holidays contest voting is going on from the fifteenth to the eighteenth, with the winner to be announced on the nineteenth. And I'll mention too, that the New Year's Eve splash at the Christiansburg Aquatic Center December twenty-ninth from five-thirty to eight-thirty, five-thirty to eight P.M. That's all I've got.
County attorney? Nothing to report, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Ms. Twitty? Ms. Warren? Terry, you got anything? You need anything? We're good? Any other staff members here? All right, I will close that portion, and other business? Oh, we have council reports, I'm sorry. Mr. Bishop?
No reports.
Ms. Hicks?
Yes, we had a very large meeting today, we also had the audit for the agency on aging and senior services today, and then I also got the number of the people who received services during the twenty-twenty-three year, calendar year. For the Christiansburg, it was thirty-two, three thousand two hundred and twenty-two people that received services from the agency on aging, comparable to Montgomery County, which was three thousand fifty-five, so we actually used more of their services than the county, the whole county did, which I thought was really impressive. So, anyway, I thought that you would like to find that out, and then also, I wanted just to say, thank you so much to all the people involved with the Christiansburg Parade. I think it was an amazing parade this year, it was probably one of the largest I have ever seen in this small town, which it was amazing to see, and so glad everybody came out, the businesses came out, everybody supported them, and Parks and Rec, the police department, everybody, all the information, stuff in here, and everybody involved with that, it was, they did an amazing job this year. And including the rec-centered Wonderland, Winter Wonderland event that they had, which was also amazing.
Thank you. Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'll just echo on the Christmas parade, Parks and Rec did a fantastic job, great event, as always, and I think it may have been one of its most well-attended this year, so, just a fantastic turnout for that, and thank you for the Parks and Rec Department and Public Works certainly as well, big time for making that a huge success, so thank you very much.
Wilson?
Yeah, just want to mention that Ms. Hockett and I had an emergency services committee meeting last night, and the one thing that we want to bring to your attention is that she and I will be reviewing the emergency operation plan and potentially making some edits to it, but above and beyond that, our, both our law enforcement and our fire and rescue, they undergo different training and some hands-on practices that go on throughout the year. Ms. Hockett and I are looking into, there's some FEMA training for elected officials that we will be, it's online classes, and then later into the summer, early fall, we are going to look at possibly doing some hands-on with our law enforcement and our emergency services folks to see what incident, what our responsibilities are as elected officials in an emergency of some sort. We don't know what, completely what that looks like yet, but we're just warning you at this point that she and I are looking into a few things that we will bring before you in not too distant future.
Very good. I appreciate Ms. Bowman taking you out of office today. I am authorized, if either one of you would like, I am authorized to sound, to swear in the other two members of council, or if you'd like to wait until January the ninth, and have the clerk of courts, who we've historically done, I think anyone that is an elected official that has the title of the honorable in front of it, which could be any of us up here, can swear in one of our council members, but I do have the forms if anyone wants to be sworn in tonight, or we'll be glad to do it on, and Tiffany does know about, that she was out of town today for this thing, so, anyway. I will take a moment to wish staff and council and county attorneys and all of you sitting out here a very Merry Christmas and a very safe holiday. And with that, we have a little bit of other business.
All right. We presay closed meeting under Code of Virginia two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven, A3, for discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property for a discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiation strategy of the public body. The closed meeting has been held for discussion of potential purchase of property located in downtown Christiansburg, and that is form of a motion.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion?
I think this should wait until next year.
Any other discussion?
Do we need to?
For another month.
Do we need to vote or head now or anything?
We have to go into closing meeting.
To allow Kim to join us?
How?
To allow Kim to join us? Is there anything that we should do?
And she is open to, she is open to joining.
I just wanted to make sure that we.
She is a sworn council member effective January one, so she can sit down on the closing session, maybe, now that she's taken here. Madam Clark?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is five-o, thank you very much. We will take about a three-minute break in order to clear the council chambers.